Hi, how are you? Happy Holidays. This is a very exciting night for all of us. When I was a Sika here, this was one of the biggest nights of the year, district medals. So I'm glad to see everybody out and the parents. This is our December Board meeting, but we also honor our standouts in athletic and extracurricular activities at this board meeting. So welcome, we're happy to have you. You're going to see a little bit of a board meeting tonight, very little, and then I'm going to throw it over to Dr. Hazel, but I'm going to be nice to see how it kind of works. Pursuant to the Open Polyglies Act, Chapter 231, Public Laws of 1975, this meeting was advertised, as they noticed on the Advert Park Press on December 1st, 2023, and has been duly advertised in the Advert Park Press issue of December 7th, 2023. All municipal clerks of the township within the regional high school district have been notified, and the requirements of this meeting was met on December 1st, 2023. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Scholar, did you have any changes to the executive agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. In addition to the items that were noted on the agenda that was pre-printed prior to the meeting, the Board also discussed the following items in the executive session. For exception number three, the Board also discussed the student suspension discipline report. For exception number four, the Board discussed a negotiation sidebar agreement with the FREA. For exception number seven, the Board discussed two student matters. The first one is Student Matter 2023-50427, and the second one is Student Matter 2023-50587. The Board also discussed issues surrounding the Central Office Boiler. For exception number seven, and for exception number eight, the Board discussed personnel issues as noted on the agenda.
Thank you. Now I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November 30th Board meeting. Any discussion, Board? Not hearing any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bruno? Mrs. Caffiello? Mrs. Finelli? Mrs. Hagley? Mrs. Lattler? Ms. McCov? Mr. Peruzzi? Mr. Messinger? Mr. Bruno?
Just to note that all communications are filed with the Board Secretary. Dr. Hazel, are you ready?
I am ready. Thank you, Mr. Bruno. Good evening, I'm Dr. Hazel, the Superintendent of Schools. We welcome you all here tonight, and we are so excited to recognize the outstanding achievements of our students. Each of you have worked so hard to earn this recognition, and we are so proud of you. To all of our teachers and coaches, advisors, Sikas, administrators, thank you. You have forged the path for our students' success. You've worked tirelessly to ensure our students are provided the best programs and services, and our community truly appreciates all of your support. This program tonight, and many others across the district, and the individual students that are seated before us exemplify how the meaningful work of this district truly manifests in each student. Our work in the district first and foremost centers on building relationships and connections with our students. So they are continually building their confidence and can maximize the opportunities that are provided to them in this district. These relationships pave the way for students to engage at the highest levels in their classrooms, on the field, and in our community. These two essential components, relationship building and engagement, are the foundational hallmarks that lead to learning, development, and growth. This is the regional hallmark. Tonight's program and each student's success in the district is a testament to this continuum of work. To all the parents and the friends and family that are here this evening, we thank you for your partnership, and congratulations on your child's work and accomplishment. As a parent myself, I know all of you have had a long journey, and this is a commitment, but moments like this really make all of the hard work count. So to all the parents, I mean just a round of applause for all of your support tonight. I want to thank our host, Mr. Broderman. I think he went the extra mile tonight to prepare and organize for this event. Out in our lobby, we have a step and repeat, so we ask any of the students with their family and their friends if you want to take any pictures. We will have that available to you at the end of the program. And before proceeding with our recognitions, just a real special thank you to the Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education. They are the backbone of the district. Their time and dedication in servicing this community is so appreciated. So a round of applause for all of our students. Congratulations to all of the students, our award recipients this evening. We are so excited to celebrate you. I thank everyone here in advance this evening. Our program is about an hour, so I want you to take a moment to relax, enjoy, reflect on your own personal accomplishment as we share together as a community the amazing accomplishments of the Freehold Regional High School District, students that are here assembled. You will hear some amazing accomplishments. I now invite Dr. David Bleakley, the Principal of Marlborough High School, to present his award recipients. I thank all of you for your attention, and again, to the students, I am so very proud of you. On behalf of my administrative team, all of the schools in our Board of Education, congratulations on your accomplishment and the recognition that you will be receiving this evening. Congratulations all, and enjoy the evening.
All right, good evening. Firstly, I'd like to thank our Board of Education, also our Superintendent, Dr. Hazel, as well as the entire Central Office Administrative Team for all you do to support our schools and providing so many opportunities for our students to pursue their passions. At this point, I'd like to ask the Marlborough representative on the Board, Mr. Michael Messinger, to join myself and Mr. Wright and present the medals to Marlborough High School students. So just as we go through the program tonight, a general announcement to all the students. If you come up, you know, please come up right here to this table where the medals are. You'll be able to take your medal and shake some hands, and you can stay up here as well. Families, if you want to even walk up, as Dr. Hazel said, you can take a photo afterwards in the lobby, but you're certainly welcome to take photos up front as well when your son or daughter is up here. So from Marlborough High School, I'll begin by recognizing our National Merit Commended Students. Since we are the first of six schools presented, I will describe this accomplishment on behalf of my school and the five schools that will follow. Before I do that, I'll ask all of the National Merit Recognized Students to come up to the front and stand together. So from Marlborough High School at this point, I will call your names individually in a moment, but at this point, if you're here as a National Merit Commended Student, please come up, get your medal, and stand up here with the group, and then I'll talk about what it means to be a National Merit Commended Student and say your names. So come on up. So National Merit Commended Students, of the more than 1.5 million students nationwide who entered this year's scholarship competition by taking the 2022 PSAT, 50,000 students will receive some level of recognition. Approximately 34,000 of those students are recognized as commended students. Commended students receive letters of commendation and recognition for their outstanding academic promise. Commended students are named based on a nationally applied selection index score. Recognizing their accomplishments is vital to the advancement of educational excellence in our nation. We hope that this recognition will help broaden their educational opportunities, encourage them as they continue their pursuit of academic success. So at this point, I will call the names, and as I call your name, please step forward. Just so you know, there were some students who also earned this distinction at Marlborough High School that were unable to be here this evening, so I will call their names, but if you don't see somebody stepping forward, that's just because they weren't able to make it. So Priti Atardi. Amanda Fadier. Jenna Friedman. Alyssa Hoffman. Husefa Islam. Miles Kaplan. Jacob Leftowitz. James Lynn. Ethan Smith. Bada Tupuri. Michael Wong. And Alena Zaver. Congratulations to all of you on this outstanding achievement. Sticking with academics, we had students at Marlborough High School that received perfect scores on the math section of the SAT. At this point, again, I'll invite those students who are here for that reason to come forward, grab your medal, and stand up front, and then I'll talk about your accomplishment. So Marlborough High School, perfect scores on the math section of the SAT. SAT section scores are calculated by the College Board using a conversion chart that takes raw scores and converts them into section scores out of 800. That conversion chart is different with each test administration. It is scaled to other students who took the test, which means there could potentially be a little bit of wiggle room for an incorrect response. However, most experts agree that on the math section of the SAT, you literally need to be perfect. So that means that all these students in front of you, you know, are very challenging questions on the SAT, which I'm sure all the adults in the room can remember the SAT. We're literally perfect, so congratulations to them. Again, I'll call you to move, step forward when I say your name. Akash Prasad. Larry Z. Cameron Fielder. Sean Fielder. Sarah Gold. Sasha Root. And Bowen Lu. Congratulations to all of you for your outstanding accomplishment. I will now turn it over to Mr. Dave Ryan, the Supervisor of Extracurricular Activities, to recognize our students who achieved either individual or team distinction in this fall in extracurricular sports or activities.
Good evening. First, I'm going to call Allshore Chorus, Allshore Chorus and Allshore Band. A brief description of this award is Allshore Chorus and Allshore Band are comprised of some of the best high school musicians in Monmouth and Ocean County. Students are auditioned competitively, and those are selected to come together and rehearse just for a few weeks, and then they produce a full-blown concert to showcase the best high school musicianship in the region. Many of those students go on to become selected for Allstate. This year, Marlborough High School had one Allshore Chorus nominee. Her name is Cara Wadd. Cara Wadd. The next award is the CJ MEA Region 2 Ensemble, and the description of this, students that reside in central New Jersey that are in good standing within their respective music programs are eligible to audition for the Central Jersey Music Educators of America Region 2 Band and Orchestra. Students from high schools across the county of Central Jersey audition and make it to the select ensemble. Students must perform fundamentals such as scales from memory, a prepared and a rigorous solo, and sight reading. This year, Marlborough High School had two nominees. We have Evelyn Lee and Leah Trezor. Moving on to athletics. The title of Allshore and Allstate means that an athlete is held as one of the top athletes at his or her position on a team in comparison to all the other athletes in the Shore Conference or in the state of New Jersey respectively. Can I please have Mike Consalazio and Dana Imperial come down, please? So Mike, Mike Consalazio is for First Team Allshore for football. He actually set the Marlborough High School record for the most sacks in one game with six. Dana is for gymnastics, First Team Allshore and First Team Allstate, and she plays first in the finals on bars. Bean. It was Bean. Thank you. All right, the next person I'd like to call down is Coach Nick Scialzo. Now normally this is for pseudo-recognition, but what Coach Scialzo did with our softball program last year is phenomenal. So Coach Scialzo this year is recognized as the New Jersey State Coach of the Year for Softball. Coach Scialzo has been the head coach. He's been the head coach at Marlborough High School for over 10 years. Last year, led our softball team to its first-ever NJSIAA overall group four state championship. I'll turn it over to Dr. Bleakley. Everyone have a great holiday.
All right, thank you. That concludes the awards for Marlborough High School. At this point, I'd like to introduce Menalapan High School Principal, Mr. Sean Curry.
Thank you, Dr. Bleakley. Good evening. I would like to thank Dr. Hazel, our Central Office Administration, and our Board of Education for recognizing and celebrating our students' accomplishments throughout the Freehold Regional High School District this evening. My name is Sean Curry, the proud Principal of Menalapan High School. At this time, I'd like to ask the Menalapan High School Board of Education Representatives, Ms. Jamie Bruno from Menalapan, and Ms. Diana Caffiello from Englishtown Borough, to make their way to the front of the stage to assist with the distribution or addition of medals from Menalapan High School. Mr. Broderman, I'll purchase you a new stand. So we will begin with two all students of Menalapan High School who are being recognized tonight as National Merit Commended Students, nine of which could be here tonight. All Menalapan High School students who earned a distinction of National Merit Commended Student, please come up to the stage at this time. Okay, when I call your name, step forward. I know we couldn't be here tonight, but Izzy Aurora. Anish Chakrambordi. Rashad Chakrambordi. Brian Genitev. Vian James. Brian Low. Kevin Lu. Justin Miller. Rashad Lukurjun. Brian Norman. Rhea Kwar. And Savan Shah. Congratulations. Menalapan High School also has two students who earned a distinction of National Merit Semi-finalists, one of which could be here tonight. As Dr. Bleakley mentioned previously, 34,000 of the 50,000 recognized students are commended students. The remaining 16,000 are National Merit Scholarship Semi-finalists. Semi-finalists are the highest-scoring entrants in each state. The semi-finalist receives scholarship application materials, and if selected, students from his group may ultimately become finalists and then potentially winners at a National Merit Scholarship. Menalapan High School's two National Merit Semi-finalists are Bernard Mian, who cannot be here tonight, and Ravi Tripathi. Additionally, Menalapan High School has six students who earned a perfect score on the math section of the SAT. We ask all six students to please come up at this time. Okay, please step forward when we call your name. Anish Chakrambordi. Rashad Chakrambordi. Yvonne Cassikin. Brian Norman. Rhea Kwar. And Jacob Shatz. Congratulations. Menalapan High School also has two students who earned the distinction of Eagle Scout. Eagle Scout is the highest achievement or rank attainable in the Boy Scouts of America program. Since its inception in 1911, only 4% of scouts have earned this rank after a lengthy review process. I am proud to introduce our two Eagle Scouts and ask them to come up at this time. Coming up first is Connor Porter. Connor earned his Eagle Scout by completing a bridge renovation project at Monmouth Battlefield State Park in Menalapan. He reconstructed, repaired, power washed, stained, and repainted numerous parts of the left bridge. This project took approximately one year to complete. Also receiving his Eagle Scout, Chris Shah. Chris Shah earned his Eagle Scout honor in June 2022 for replacing trail signs in Thompson Park in Lynncroft. The project involved replacing the park system's eaching signposts with new, low-maintenance ones, which were the first of their kind. The entire project, from planning to completion, took seven months. Congratulations, guys. At this time, I would like to recognize our athletic accomplishments on behalf of our Sika, Ms. English, who was still at our wrestling meet. First, I'd like to call up our three young ladies who are First Team Allshore for girls' soccer. Come on up. Okay, please step forward when I call your name. First, Vanessa Sorf. Second, Sydney Spillsbury. And finally, Casey Resker. Our final award from Menalapan High School goes to Jake Orwich, please come up. Jake is being recognized as First Team Allshore punter and First Team USA Today All Jersey Defensive Team as punter as well. Congratulations, Jake. At this time, I would like to turn it over to the Principal of Freehold Borough High School, Dr. Levetta Ross.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Levetta Ross, the proud Principal of the first school in the district, Freehold High School. And it is in this school year that we are celebrating 100 years. At this time, I would like to echo the sentiments presented by my colleagues and thank you, Dr. Hazel, the Central Administration Board of Education, for honoring our students and providing us with the tools and materials that we need to make every day a successful day for the children that you trust us with regularly. At this time, I'm going to ask all of my National Merit Commended Students to come forward. And I would like to invite our Board member, Ms. Amanda McCov, to come down and join us as well. I'm going to call all of the names, and we do have a couple who are not attending this evening, but I still would like to say their names. Alina Abramson. Emily Abalanci. Henry Young. Joshua Ezra. Daniel Newark. Mackenzie N. Limmar Turem. Pandia Shivam. And these, ladies and gentlemen, are our commended scholars. Thank you so much. This evening, I will share our athletic accomplishment as well. Our Sika, Joshua Mel, is unable to be with us this evening as we have a wrestling match back at the school between Freehold Borough and Freehold Township, and so he's there with a packed house. Jay Marie Sarivia is not with us this evening, but she is our athlete who placed eighth in the vault in gymnastics, so we want to recognize her as well. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to the Principal of Coltsneck High School, Mr. Donaghy.
Thanks, guys. That was awesome. I appreciate you. Okay, good evening, Paris and Guardians and students. I want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues, thanking the Board of Education, Dr. Hazel, our Superintendent, and the Central Administrative Staff for holding this event. It really is a privilege to share this evening with the talented students of the Freehold Regional High School District. At this time, I would like to call up our Coltsneck Board of Education representative. This is Deborah Finelli to help us give out awards. Okay, I have two students here with perfect SAT scores, so if you guys could come up and stand up here. Okay, Cole Armando couldn't be here tonight, but he had a perfect... Oh, here, where is he? Oh, okay, come on up. So, Cole Armando had a perfect SAT score in math, and Vihang Sandeep had a perfect SAT score in English, so congratulations. Sorry, Cole, I didn't see you. Sorry, I'm sorry. So congratulations to our two perfect SAT students. Okay, guys, you can return. Okay, at this time, I'd like to call up our National Merit Commended Students. So if you could come on down and stand up front. Okay, we had five National Merit Commended Students at Coltsneck High School, so if you could step forward when I call your name. Sawyer Chang, Frank Digh, Nate Taylor-Clarkman, Jacob McNamara, and Alexander Reese. Congratulations to our National Merit Commended Students. All right, at this time, I would like to call up our Eagle Scouts. We have three Eagle Scouts at Coltsneck High School this year, so if our Eagle Scouts could come down and join us in the front. Okay, I believe Alex Cantino and Connor Caulfield couldn't be here, but we do have Chris Dalby here. And Chris's Eagle Scout project consisted of leading the installation of a bell garden at Our Lady of Mercy Church in Englishtown, New Jersey. The garden was designed to enhance and display the church bell that was removed from the bell tower over a decade ago. So, Chris, congratulations and thank you for your service to the community. At this time, I would like to introduce Mr. David Zwirs, our Supervisor of Extracurricular Activities at Coltsneck High School, to present our athletic and academic, or I'm sorry, extracurricular awards.
Good evening. Thanks, Dr. Donahue. Thank you, Board of Education, and thank you, Dr. Hazel. I'm gonna first call up our four individual All-Shore athletes, so if you're an individual here and you are selected to All-Shore, if you could please come up. So when I call your name, you could just step forward. First is Elizabeth Scarpas. She was the number-one runner on our girls' cross-country team. She was an MOC qualifier. Next is Matt Ligio. Matt is a three-year starter on defensive and offensive line for our football team. Next is Chris Scully. Chris Scully broke a ten-year record. He is now our all-time leading rusher, and he was a three-year starter at running back. And last but not least is Savannah Butts. Savannah Butts is first-team All-Star in girls' volleyball and is the all-time leader in blocks, half-middle blocker for a season and career. Thank you and congratulations, guys. Okay, next, could I have our boys' cross-country team come up? Our boys' cross-country team were the Central Jersey Group Three State Sectional Champions for the second year in a row and the ninth time in program history. And last, if you could step forward, is Jay Amidala, Aaron Alpo, Hunter Salcupa, Andrew Croft, Jacob McNamara, Digo Rutko, Lucas Sanjanari, Don Cipiro, and also with us is head coach Jim Schlenz. Thank you, boys. Congratulations. And last for athletics, can we please have our gymnastics team come up? Okay, our Coltsneck gymnastics team were the South State Sectional Champions for the second time in program history and first time since two thousand and four. Girls, when you hear your name, you could step forward. Ashwika Anand, Danny Bosin, Alyssa Di Ambrogio, Caitlin Dougherty, Megan Dougherty, Sienna Demansky, Caitlin Blick, Ava Conville, Kirsten Lukowicz, Maddie Marinaccio, Sharon Nazamoff, Julia Nabrowski, Katie Okerson, Jenna Holieri, Ella Scherzer, Claire Walsh, Charlotte Zlatnik, and managers Daniela and Mariella Manzer, and Gabrielle Sager. And also with us are assistant coach Lauren Auton and head coach Haley Voges, who was named Ashbury Park Press Coach of the Year for gymnastics. Congratulations, ladies. Thank you, everyone. Happy holidays.
Okay, at this time, it is my pleasure to introduce Dr. Alicia Selsa, the Principal at Freehold Township High School.
Hi, good evening. My name is Dr. Alicia Selsa. I'm the Principal of Freehold Township High School. First, I'd like to congratulate all of the students who are in attendance here tonight that are being recognized for their outstanding achievements. I'd also like to thank their parents for all of the support that they've provided over the course of the last couple of years. I'd also like to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Hazel, Dr. Howe, and all of the Central Office personnel. I'd like to invite at this time Mrs. Elizabeth Higley, who is the Board of Education Representative for Freehold Township. And I'd also like to thank Mr. Dylan, who's here tonight, that has helped me greatly throughout this process. So, without further ado, I am proud to recognize one of Freehold Township's students that received a perfect score on the MAC SAT. Congratulations, Alexander Grant. Alexander is unable to be with us tonight. I would also like to congratulate one of our students who has been named a semifinalist for the National Merit Scholar. Congratulations, Leah Bloom. We are also proud to recognize Sean Sweetnam for earning his Eagle Scout badge. Sean, please come down. To earn this rank, Sean renovated the Georgia Road Schoolhouses woodshed and outhouse. He's cleaned, scraped, sanded, and repainted both buildings. Congratulations, Sean. At this time, I'd like to call down the members of the FTHS FFA. Please come down and get your award, and then I'd like to call your name. Please step forward.
Yeah, Danny got it too, and then Matt got it. Or Matt, what do you think?
No, I got it last June.
Freehold Township High School houses the Animal and Botanical Sciences Academy. Students from throughout the regional district can apply, and if accepted, attend FTHS to focus on various topics covering agribiology. All students are members of our school's chapter, the FFA, Future Farmers of America. We have multiple students that are here before you tonight. Earn first-place accolades at the two thousand twenty-three New Jersey State FFA Convention. As I call your name, please step forward. Junio Mikhail, Zero Sheik, Scarlett Sampino, Mariah Andehar, Brianna Rosemar, Ava Yanko, Alexa Premiani, Paige Dunberg, Anna Hernandez Bujan, and Emily Crisaro. Congratulations, ladies. Thank you. Eleven members of our choir were named to the All-Shore Course. Please come to the stage or the podium at this time. You can receive your medal and then stand along the stage. As I call your name, please step forward. Okay, our representatives on the All-Shore Course are Leah Palisano, Allison Farmazin, All-State Travel Course and All-Shore Course, Ryan Vahl, Daniel Logis, Jane Stanley, Sidney Bryant, Grace Renzo, Olivia Zetel, All-State Travel Course and All-Shore Course, Marcy Reola, Trinity Campbell, and Vera Kazo. Congratulations. You can head back to your seats. Thank you. Okay, congratulations to our two band members who earned Central Jersey Region Two status. Congratulations to Kevin Sweeney and Ravi Talarico-Dovel. Please step forward. At this time, I would ask that the girls' state, or girls' soccer team, please step forward. I got a little ahead of myself there. Okay, the girls' soccer team won their second consecutive Group Four championship and fourth consecutive State Sectional championship. Please step forward as I call your name. Ashley Moore, Danielle Colinda, Shay Jackson, Courtney Speck, Reece Metcalf, Christina Solano, Amy Lee Moore. Shore Conference Player of the Year, First Team All-Shore, First Team All-State, All-East Region, and All-American, Amy Lee Moore. Danielle Howard, Bella Rosen, Ivana Gonjebal, Diana Mira, Sophia Santorini, Sophie Tomino, Gabby Parker, First Team All-Shore, Gabby Parker, Madison Reiser, Colleen Walters, Haley Santiago, First Team All-Shore, First Team All-State, Haley Santiago, Grace Sierra, Madison Graybush, Erin Conover, Cassidy Corcieon, First Team All-Shore, First Team All-State, All-East Region, Cassidy Corcieon. Kaylee Fada, Grace Marabilla, Kayla Scortino, Miley West, Jenna Volby, Alexis Stein, Miley Patterson, Ava Moreno. And also accompanying the girls tonight is Coach Whitford. Congratulations, guys. Thank you. Okay, I would like to call at this time the girls' cross-country team to come down. Our second team to win a state championship this year was our girls' cross-country team. The girls who won the Shore Conference, Central Jersey Group Four, and overall Group Four championship. As I call your name, please step forward. Emma Zawatski. Individual accolades include Shore Conference, State Sectional, Group Four, and Native Champions Champ, Shore Conference Runner of the Year, New Jersey Runner of the Year, First Team Allshore, First Team Allstate, Emma Zawatski. Leah Rutledge. Heather Feinstein. Sophia Briggs. Natalie Briggs. Caroline Cox. Catherine Maloa. David Newman. And the coach tonight, the company name is Coach Briggs. Congratulations, everybody. Okay, at this time, I'd like to call Alexis Zarenchuk. Alexis is one of our gymnasts. She won First Team Allshore, First Team Allstate, and State Sectional Champion in the vault, floor exercise, and all-around. Congratulations on behalf of Mr. Versavi, who's unable to be with us tonight. And also, I want to make sure to congratulate him for bringing us a happy holiday. I'd like to now introduce Mr. Jeremy Braverman, Principal of Howell.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and last but not least, the host school, Howell High School. Thank you for all coming. For those of you that stayed, thank you so much for recognizing the Howell students. I would like to thank the Board of Education for all their support, our Superintendent, Dr. Hazel, and the central office staff who is out here tonight and support us. At this time, I'd also like to recognize, and come stand up next to me, the, so every, each school has a student who is on the Superintendent Advisory Council. So, one student from each school, a huge honor, and they are part of the Student Board of Education, and they come to our board meetings when they're at their home school. There's times where they will speak at the board meetings and do presentations, and the Howell High School representative is Alexa Barbosa. So, Alexa, come stand next to me. Okay, so, I'd like to invite up the Board of Education members of Howell and Farmingdale. We have three in all. First from Howell, Mr. Pete Bruno. Then we have, also from Howell, Mark Felici. And from Farmingdale, Kathy Lavin. You guys can come and assist us, which I see you already have done. Okay, so, allshore chorus. This year, we had a ton of students that were allshore chorus, and our advisors here as well. So, I'd ask all the allshore chorus and our advisor to please come forward, and I will announce your names. Okay, first, if I call your name, please step forward and be acknowledged. Claire Spivak. Sophie Turtle. Ivan Ly. Leila Puglisi. Maytal Arroyo. Ava Orea. Livia Rose Combs. Connor Laspo. Paige Grayson. Josh Rivera. And these students also were allshore chorus and performed at the Allstate Chorus Concert in November as well. Those students are Alyssa Prey. Kayla Brown. Kesha Osner. And also performing at Allstate Chorus in November was Megan Koella. And lastly, allshore chorus, Laya Turtle. And our advisor who's here today, who does a phenomenal job with our chorus. Last night, we had our winter concert. We had a packed house here. There was not a seat left in the house, and we had an amazing winter concert. So, thank you so much. Casey Shields. Okay, you may go back to your seats. I'd like for members of our band who won awards either in Region Two or Allstate, please come forward at this time. So, we had two students that were Region Two. One was Region Two Band Ensemble and Orchestra, and one was Region Two Concert Band. And then we had two students that were New Jersey Allstate Modern Band. So, Region Two Band Ensemble and Orchestra, Jacob Wazika. Region Two Concert Band is Caitlin Morcia. That's a link to the crowd, okay. Sorry about that. And then we have Brandon Basello. And lastly, Zoe Leboits. Thank you, and our advisor is Bill Levoli. Thank you so much. You need to take more pictures if you want. You good? Make a reel out of it? Okay, I'd like to have our three girls' soccer players who are here this evening to please come forward. So, I'll announce the athletes that are here this evening, and also recognize the one that's not. So, first, little girl over here who just almost tripped. She is a freshman, and she has, was a huge impact on our team this year. She won the Player of the Year this year for ninth graders in the Shore Conference. Her name is Mackenzie Mone. And next to Mackenzie is our First Team Allshore Soccer Player, Jade Vera. We also have Madison Smith, who was unable to be here tonight. She was First Team Allshore as well. Thank you, ladies. I'd now like to call up our gymnast to us here this evening. Gianna, if you'd come up. Also here this evening is Gianna's coach, Ms. Phillips, who I know wants Gianna to have the spotlight, so she is going to hang out in the back. So, this is Gianna Chapin. She is a gymnast at Howell High School. She was the South Jersey Sectional Champion in the uneven bars. Congratulations, Gianna. Next, I'd like to call up our volleyball players here this evening. Okay, this is our third Mullen that we've had come through here, all phenomenal athletes. This is Kiera Marie Mullen, and Kiera was First Team Allshore this year for girls' volleyball, and she's coming back next year. Now, I'd like to call up our, our boys' soccer players and our boys' soccer coach at this time. I know Nick wants me to call perfect SAT score, he told me, but that's not what he's up here for. He asked me to do that. Okay, so, these are a couple of members of our boys' soccer team. We were fortunate enough this year to have three athletes on the boys' soccer team that were First Team Allshore. That's a great accomplishment. Two of them are up here tonight, one of them is not. Ty Hazel is not, but we do have Junior Nick Totoro here, First Team Allshore. And Brent Ramon, First Team Allshore. And the handsome gentleman standing next to them is our boys' soccer coach, who has been our boys' soccer coach for close to 30 years, has had some very successful teams, and this year, he was identified as being the Shore Conference Boys Soccer Coach of the Year. Congratulations, Mr. Richy. Hey, at this time, Alexa's gonna give a speech? No, at this time, I'm gonna turn the program back over to Dr. Hazel, and thank you, and happy holidays.
Just lastly, just thank you all for being so gracious and staying this evening to represent and congratulate all of the students and award recipients from all of our high schools. Happy holidays, have a wonderful evening, and a great vacation. Thank you.
It was wonderful to congratulate and recognize all of our students and achievements of our Freehold Regional High School and high school students. Always wonderful when we have the families and the students out to be recognized. On the agenda, we are approving our 24-25 school calendar. There is one change. This is a second draft. It's on the custodial grounds and maintenance calendar, a change having off, not July 5th and February 17th, but being off December 24th and December 31st.
I must say, I went to eight, 20, 21, today. District medals, that was very organized. So, thank you to central administration and the principals that organized this. Very organized. I think you brought the right group. Let's break it all, that's right. We do have a board report tonight. Capiello has policy.
I apologize, I have the policy. I can't make it as entertaining as, as long as, so I'll try my best. The policy committee met on November 28th, and the following policies will be on the December 14th, that's today. Board of Agenda for abolishment or first read. Policy 5460.02 is the bridge year pilot program, and that's being abolished. And the reason it's being abolished, it's no longer necessary because the last graduating class that would have been eligible graduated in the graduating class of 2022. Policy 8540 is on the school nutrition program, and Policy 8550, meal charges and outstanding group service bills are being abolished. And Policy 8500, group services is being revised. The reason for this is for some changes, some government changes that need to be reflected. The revisions to the statutes and the newly created statutes require extensive revisions to the existing policies, 8500, 8540, and 8550. And Policy Guide that addresses the pertinent provisions of working-class families, the Anti-Hunger Act. The revised Policy Guide 8500 is mandated and must be adopted by the board if the district is to participate in the national school lunch program. So, there's a lot of changes coming down from the federal government for the school lunch program, and who will be qualifying, and that's filtering down into the state mandates. So, that's why these policies needed abolishment and revision. Policy 2270, Religion in Schools, has been revised as the United States Department of Education released an updated guidance on constitutionally protected prayer and religious expressions in public elementary and secondary schools. The 2023 guidance replaces the 2020 guidance, and there's just some minor revisions, but that's why there were some changes made, again, because of mandated policy from the federal government. Policy 3212 and 4212, attendance, they're mandatory and they're revised, these policies. Legislation that was signed on July 3rd of 2023 expanded the allowable use of safe time for school employees. The provisions in this legislation require these revisions as far as staff attendance is concerned. Policy 3224 and 4324, our right to privacy have been revised. The revised policy language addresses concerns related to privacy violations that can occur due to unauthorized audio or video recording of teaching and support staff members by students, other staff members, visitors, or any other person while the school staff member is performing their board-assigned job responsibilities. Any recording is prohibited without the approval of the staff member's principal or supervisor. Again, a protection in place for our staff members for their right to privacy. Policy and Regulation 5111 is mandatory and has been revised. The policy and regulation explains the criteria to be eligible to enroll in school, the required documentation for proof of residency, et cetera. To avoid redundancy, Policy 5111 has been shortened, and any provisions that were removed from Policy 5111 is now included in the revised Regulation 5111. Policy 5116, Education of Homeless Children and Youth, has been revised. The statute requires enrollment for up to two school years of students who were made homeless and forced to move out of the district because of a natural disaster or terrorist attack. Also, the term homeless child has been revised to, say, homeless child and youth. And the importance of this is that there's some continuity for the student. If the student has had a catastrophe of some kind that has forced them to become homeless, and they're educated now, let's just say in our district, they're entitled to stay for two years in the district that's educating them, so that there's some continuity to their educational process. And that's all.
Thank you very much. Let me do an entertaining job with that. Thank you. I don't see anything on public participation tonight. Is there anyone here for public participation? I don't see anything, or any sheets. So, not seeing anybody for public participation tonight. We're gonna go right on with G, Personnel and Negotiations. Oh, yes, before we do that, I'm gonna throw it back to Mr. Boys. Go ahead.
So, board, you should have a copy at your, at your place, and also, there's copies in the back table for an amendment to an existing resolution. J, five educational programs, approval of overnight excursion, so it's an addition of one other excursion for Howell Wrestling. The Feast of the East in Newark-Belaware dates December 15 through 17. Six students, ten chaperones, so you could add that to the existing resolution. We also have two new resolutions, and I'll read them into the record, first being J9, be resolved at the Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education approves the settlement agreement for student matter 2023-50427 on file at the Office of Special Services. And J10, be resolved at the Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education approves the settlement agreement for student matter 2023-50587. the settlement agreement for student matter 2023-50587, on file in the Office of Special Services, so with those amendments.
Thank you. Congratulations, we're good? Okay, we're going to go to G, Personnel Negotiations, and I have a motion to approve G1 through G12.
Second.
Not hearing any discussion, can I have a motion?
We're, uh, roll call.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capello?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes, except I abstain on Christopher Provo in G6.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mrs. McCob?
Yes.
Mr. Palisi?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. We're going to take Program Operations, Buildings, Transportation, Physical Plan, may I have a motion to approve H1 through I2?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? No discussion, roll call?
Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capello?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mrs. McCob?
Yes.
Mr. Palisi?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. We're going to take Educational Programs and Administration, may I have a motion to approve J1 through K5?
Motion.
Second.
Mrs. McCob and Mrs. Capello. Yep. Any discussion? Not hearing discussion, roll call, please.
Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capello?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mrs. McCob?
Yes.
Mr. Palisi?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. Oh goodness, did any board member have a new business? So... We're going to go to new business, and then you have something, and I have something, so you go first.
Sure. We are pleased to announce the promotion of one of our own, Christopher Provo, a teacher in our district. Service in our district is being promoted to CICA Supervisor of Extracurricular and Activities at Freehold Township High School. We wish you all the best in your new position, and welcome aboard.
Congratulations. So, I love this for new business, one of our board members is moving on, and we're going to miss her, but we were talking about her the other day, she has a very, very calming, she's just very calming, and makes everybody feel so good, and contributed a lot to the board, she's a good friend, I'm going to have her sell my house someday, I'll be soon as we think.
No, no, no.
And we're just going to really miss you so much, and, but thank you for all your service and your years with us, and it was some tight stuff with the busing last year, with the chain superintendent, but very calming, always there, and very concerned with our special ed programs, so we thank her for that. Come up to the middle of the stage, please.
Can I say something first?
Yeah, come right out here, please.
Thank you so much, that was so nice of you, I'm so happy to hear that I have a calming effect.
Thank you, you're actually being patient.
That really was very nice, thank you so much, it really was an honor to be part of the Freehold Regional High School District community and serve the Colson community, I really did enjoy my three years here on board, and I'm going to miss working with everyone, so thank you so much, I appreciate it, happy holidays, everyone, thank you.
Did any board member have any new business? Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
So first of all, I'd like to thank, excuse me, congratulate, I know what I'm saying, I'd like to congratulate all of those students who received academic, musical, athletic, or scouting recognition today, your artwork and dedication are commendable and worthy of such recognition. I would also like to congratulate Mr. Eric Gross and the talented students of the Frehle Borough Chorus Choir Percussion and Band for a job well done at last night's concert, it was a wonderful evening filled with beautiful music, thanks to the Frehle Borough Music Department. And finally, I just want to wish everybody up here and the students, faculty, staff, and families of the Frehle Regional High School District a wonderful holiday season and a happy, healthy new year.
Thank you, and I guess happy holidays and Merry Christmas to everyone, happy new year, healthy new year. So, I'm going to adjourn this meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, panic, I was waiting for that, you were a little slow tonight, Stadman, but...
I was, I was trying to at least let you finish the sentence.
Meeting adjourned.
All favorites?
All favorites? Thank you, everybody.